It's 6:00 PM, February 26, 2025, and I'd like to open the zoning board of appeals meeting for this evening. I'd like to announce that this meeting is being televised live on local cable, channel 8 and 1072 HD. I'd like to have us all rise and pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Next, does anyone have a public comment regarding anything not related to any agenda items tonight? If so, please check in with Mary Ann, two over, and you can have three minutes to make your comment. Anybody have anything that's not on the agenda that would like to have three minutes? Seeing none? Thank you. Next, in reference to public comment, every application I should go to the public for the public comment, if for some reason I forget, feel free to raise your hand and I will make sure that I reach out to you because everybody in the audience that wants to participate should be able to do so. Tonight, we have five members here, two are associates and three are regulars, and so that's who's going to be sitting on every.
Got three on the disabled list.
There you go. Charlie, would you like to read the first continued hearing, please?
Be happy to do that, Mr. Bonfica.
Thank you, sir.
Continued hearings for February 26, 2025, 90 Wheeler Road. Owners George L. Rice and Jennifer C. Rice request a special permit under 17417.1 and 17433 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace an existing single-family residential structure on property located in an R5 zoning district, map 97, parcel 16, Mashpee, Mass., continued from February 12, 2025.
Counselor, could you remind us why this was continued, please?
Sure. Mr. Chair, members of the board, for the record, attorney Christopher Corain, representing the applicants in this particular application. The reason it was continued from the last hearing was that we had not gotten our conservation approval, and that has since happened, so we are now ready to go. So as a part of the hearing notice, this is a raise and replace project under 17417.1 and 17433. The house itself or the parcels located in the R5 zoning district, as the board knows, the R5 zoning district has a minimum lot size of 80,000 square feet, minimum lot frontage of 150 feet, a front yard setback of 40 feet, side and rear of 15 feet, lot coverage max is 20%, max building height is 35 feet, and with any project that is near a wetland, the bylaw requires a 50-foot setback from the nearest wetland. The lot is nonconforming. There's no, I'd like to point out as always, there's no flood zone that we're worried about on this particular lot. It's not a flood zone lot. The lot area, however, though, the total lot area is 24,070 square feet, which is a nonconforming condition. The lot frontage is 100 feet, which is a nonconforming condition. And then our only dimensional setback is the setback to wetlands. So the current setback to wetland to the structure is 28.2 feet. So the current structure meets your front yard, it meets your side yards, it meets your rear, but it does not meet the setback to wetlands. And it meets lot coverage existing, so our only nonconformity is the setback to wetlands. If you look at the plan, there's a lot going on, so the, I highlighted in blue, that's the old, that's the existing building, and then what's in green is where the new structure is going. So we're going to be pulling that structure further away from the wetland resource area. So the proposed distance from wetland resource area is 48.9 feet, so we're pulling in a significant distance from what's existing. The project has been approved by conservation. Brad from JC Engineering is with me. He guided the project through conservation, and, you know, there's a significant amount of mitigation that's proposed as part of this project. There is an IA system that's going into the, into the ground as part of this, as part of this project, so replacing a Title V system. We're not creating any new nonconformities. We're not intensifying any existing nonconformities. The plan shows your average natural grade. The building plans show the height. We meet your 35 feet max from average existing grade. The lot coverage that is proposed is 16.2%, which is still well under your 20% max. So, so again, we're going to meet your side yard setbacks, we meet your rear yard setbacks, we meet your front yard setbacks, we're going to meet your lot coverage, and we're significantly improving the setback to the wetland. The new home will be building code compliant. Again, it's been approved by conservation. We're doing the IA system. Stormwater management for roof runoff is proposed. As you can see on the right side of Brad's plan, it shows the precast drywall system. So Brad's also here to answer any questions if you have any. And so, and I would say consistent with development in the neighborhood, if the board recalls, we had a project that was approved on 42 Wheeler Road, which is just down the street, which is a similar in scope of that one. So all that being said, I think overall this is much more improvement over what's existing with the IA system, with pulling it back from the wetland resource area, and, you know, the extensive mitigation that the conservation commission is requiring on this project. So with that, I'll turn it over to the board and have you answer any questions.
Would you please read all letters into the record?
I will. Board of Health, received 224, 2025, for 90 Wheeler Road. Board of Health. Septic designed for five bedrooms. House plans show five bedrooms, two on the first floor and three on the second floor. Let's see.
I have conservation.
Thank you, conservation. 90 Wheeler Road. NOI application was approved by the commission with the unanimous vote. Pool was moved 16 feet back from the original position, and overall, the commission felt comfortable approving the application due to the large amount of mitigation planting and dwelling pool being moved further from the pond. Approval conditions are as follow. Drywells maintained on a yearly schedule, three-year mitigation and monitoring contract with a certified professional, fence at the edge of mitigation area moved back eight feet, and planted with additional mitigation plantings.
I have a zoning determination.
There's a letter from Dave, right?
Yeah.
Let me just, yeah. Okay.
I can read it if you'd like.
Okay. And November 21, 2024, a letter from David Morris, building commissioner, to Brad Bertell, JC Engineering, relative to 90 Wheeler Road zoning determination. On November 18, 2024, an application for ZBA jurisdiction, Form 2 request, was submitted to raise and replace the dwelling at the above address. The current dwelling was built in 1973 as a lawfully conforming structure. Since then, a dimensional increase in lot size and frontage has rendered the lot nonconforming. Since Mash General Laws 40A Section 6 only provides protection for undeveloped lots, it is my opinion that the structure is legally existing nonconforming. Mashbey zoning bylaw at 17417.1 states that no pre-existing, nonconforming, single-family structure should be torn down and rebuilt on any lot unless there is an issuance of a special permit from ZBA. If you feel aggrieved by my decision, you may make an appeal. Thank you.
Any other letters, Mary Ann? Okay. I'm going to go to the board, then I'm going to go to David. I'm sure you have some board questions. I have a couple, but.
I'd like to hear from David after that.
Yeah, I'd like to hear it. Have you had a chance to review the plans, the building plans?
Yeah.
What are your, what are your thoughts? What are your issues with this application, please?
I don't know.
Oh, well, that's nice, isn't it?
Well, I think what the letter was suggesting was that somebody applied for a building permit, and Dave said, "You need a special permit, you just can't get a building permit." So that's, that's why we're here tonight.
Oh, I, I, no, I understand. I was going to make the statement, that's why they're in front of us.
Right, exactly.
Because it's David's letter.
Right, exactly.
I get it. So I have a couple of questions.
One 7417.1.
Yeah. Proposed tall, 5-1, 1.5 tall retaining wall, it's on the, where is your northerly arrow? It's on the northerly side of the lot line. Is that going to impact any sheet flow of water from the abutting lot?
No, it's all the runoff today. Excuse me, for the record, Brad Bertola with JC Engineering.
Sorry, I should have asked you to do that.
The, the retaining wall along the northern boundary line is, is situated so it runs in the same direction as the contours. So the surface water runoff from the northerly property will still continue to run westerly. Same goes for the grading on our locust property. The issue is, I've tried to bring that grade up on our lot to have a smoother transition from the end of the driveway down to the backyard and to account for any surface water runoff from the new driveway. We have it completely paved, and we put a Cape Cod berm along the north, north and western end, and have a catch basin, which is, it's unshown on the second, second sheet, so it wouldn't impact any surface water runoff from the neighborhood.
I am somewhat impressed with your drywells for your catchments. What year, what year storm did you design those to?
It's a 10-year storm. It's five inches of rain in a 24-hour period, so.
Here's what I'm finding hard to understand in my own brain. They look like, they're substantial in their size, and I've had more engineers come in here than not with, you know, a five-inch diameter, a five-foot diameter leaching basin that's handling a house approximately the same size, and there's one of them, and they're telling me they're 25-year, 50-year storm.
Well, they get, they probably are designing it based off what's the anticipated infiltration rate in, in clean sands.
Yeah, but it's, it's not making sense to me, but.
Yeah.
Now, when you say you designed a five-year storm, isn't it required by DEP to do 25-year storm?
It's a 10-year storm, not five-year. 10-year storm, which is five inches.
So you designed it 10?
Yes.
I thought it was 25 DEP requirement.
DEP, you may be thinking stormwater management policy or some divisions.
Keeping water on a lot, I thought it was 25-year requirement, 25-year storm requirement.
Typically, under the stormwater management policy, which is not applicable to single-family house lots, typically on developments of four units or more, that's when that applies.
Well, you're an engineer, so your stamp's on the plan. I, I didn't think of it that way, but if that's what you're saying, it's fine with me. I don't have any other questions. That being said, audience participation. Anyone in the audience like to speak in reference to this application? For or against? Okay, I see no one. Going to go back to board.
I have no questions.
Then, I'm good.
I'm a little concerned about the year storm, but somewhere I'm going to have to get a, and it doesn't affect this application, I'm just making a statement to the board. I've heard it has to be designed a 25-year versus now a 10-year. Somehow I'm going to have to get.
I'd like to get the answer to that, too.
We've got to get an answer. We've got to get an answer to that question. It's above my pay grade, you're certified engineer, your stamp is on this plan, correct?
Yeah, the owner of the company, yes.
Then at this point in time, you trump me, so, you know what? I'm not going to question it. But we've got to get an answer from, from a board standpoint, what that is.
Where does that come from ultimately, from the town?
I believe it's DEP. I mean, we've had engineers in front of us before, who have been in front of us many times, that it's a 25-year requirement at DEP. My own engineer stated to me, and he's actually done the design, boys and girls club, at a 100-year design, he said, DEP requires 25, 50, and 100.
It's a recurring issue with everyone.
Yeah, and it's like all over the place. We've got to get a determination what it is, so.
Commercial's completely different than residential, so that, that is understandable. And this was, you know, designed, it just, I picked a 10-year storm, 25-year storm, it just, you could keep going, but then it just becomes almost cost prohibitive.
Yeah. I'm, I'm looking at what you designed as being substantially more than what I normally see in a design. That's why you say 10.
Yeah.
I'm amazed, and it looks to me like it's like a 25 or 50 as compared to what I normally see.
You may be thinking that you can get different depth.
No, I, I, so I, I do drainage studies every now and then using the rational method. I have a computer program.
Okay.
Yeah, so, and, and I don't even usually like to allow use of bottom because I think the bottom gets pretty plugged up really quick, so I don't even use bottom calculations. But my point is, is I like the design, period.
Me, too.
All right, so we've gone to the audience.
I'm good.
David, you're all set?
I'm all set.
All right, like to get a motion then to close the public hearing?
So moved.
I'd like to get a second.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Like to have a motion in reference to the application, please.
Okay, I have it here relative to 90 Wheeler Road. Owners George L. Rice and Jennifer C. Rice request a special permit under 17417.1 and 17433 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace an existing single-family residential structure on property located in an R5 zoning district, map 57, parcel 16, Mashpee, Mass., with the following conditions. Motion. Number one, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a special permit under Mash General Laws 48, Section 9. Number two, plot plan, 90 Wheeler Road, Mashpee, Mass., prepared for George and Jennifer Rice, prepared by JC Engineering, Inc., scale one inch equals 15 feet, dated December 5, 2024, revised January 16, 2025, February 13, 2025, and February 25, 2025. Excuse me. Stamped and signed by John, John L. Churchill, Jr., registered land surveyor and civil engineer number 48066 and 41807. Number three, building plans, Rice Residence, 90 Wheeler Road, Mashpee, Mass., architect Rescom. AO.1 basement floor plan, A1 first floor plan, A2 second floor plan, A3 roof plan, A4 elevations, A5 elevations. Number four, condition on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the board of health and conservation department comments. Number five, any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board. Number six, condition that the applicant seek and obtain the building department review in reference to the tree bylaw, chapter 175 of the town bylaws, prior to the application of a building permit. Number seven, the board finds under 17417.1 and 17433 that the proposed project, as submitted, is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing conditions prior to removal of the existing structure, and that there is adequate land area on the subject lot to provide sufficient parking, and there are no new nonconformities being created.
Second, do you confer, do you concur with the fact that there are no new nonconformity being created?
That is correct.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Nice job with the plan.
Good work.
Sharon's right on top of it tonight, isn't she?
It's good when the plans.
Makes sense, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
What did you say?
Good when the plans.
It makes sense.
Make a little.
Here we go. I'm going to get a stamp from an aim. You can just keep all this stuff, just stamp it. All right, Charlie, would you please read the first new hearing?
First new hearing for February 26, 2025, is relative to 105 Waterway. Owners Dominic J. and Kathleen A. Venuto request a written finding under 17417 and 17433 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a garage addition, extension to a pre-existing nonconforming structure on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 105, parcel 252, Mashpee, Mass.
Okay, if you could give your name and your involvement in the project, please.
Kathleen Venuto, and, and owner.
Okay.
Dominic Venuto.
There you go. You can just pull those microphones a little closer, make it easier on yourselves.
So what can we do for you tonight?
We were told we had to go to the ZBA, even though it's a pre-existing, we're, we're putting a one-car garage underneath the pre-existing house footprint.
David, could you better, could you tell us why they're here?
Yeah, this is a carport right now. It's in a flood zone. There's no structural changes to the building. It's a shame they had to come here, but they do, they have to get approved by the board because it's an alteration within the floods, the wetlands.
Right.
17433.
Okay.
So there's not much to look at, isn't there? You know, there's not much of a change, but they're putting up four walls.
Right.
Where there were none.
Which you're going to have for flood compliance.
Yes, but they're not structural walls.
Okay.
But they do have flood vents, and I have no issues with it at all. Again, it's something I wish I could have approved, but I can't.
Have you been to conservation?
Yep.
We got approval.
Why don't we read the letters in the record?
All right, we have two reports, one from the board of health, received 22425, relative to 105 Waterway. Board of Health, no comment, no increase in habitable space, house to remain, three-bedroom. And second, from conservation department, relative to 105 Waterway, resource areas LSCSF, RDA application received, a negative determination from the commission due to the garage being proposed in existing dwelling footprint.
So it's going within the, I'm sorry.
That's, that's it.
Is that it, the extended letters? So it is going where the carport is now?
Correct, it's directly under the, under the home. There were columns there, the structural columns are holding it up.
So there's no change in lot coverage?
No.
No.
There's no change, I, I see why you had to have them come here.
Yeah.
But from a board standpoint, not a heck of a lot of.
No.
There's no setback issues, none of those.
Again, I wish I could approve it, but it has to come to this point.
Yeah, no, I get your point. I think you did the right thing, but I get your point.
Yeah. Conservation, you know, I thought they could administratively approve it, but they.
Well, they did an RDA, but I mean, at least they, it was almost administratively approved.
It was almost, yeah, it was almost.
Pretty close. All right.
Should have done, but.
Letters from AGC, board questions?
Yeah, I think this is self-explanatory.
You have any questions?
No.
No.
Questions?
Nope.
Okay, we've got the letters from Butters. David, you all set?
I'm good.
Audience, anyone in the audience like to speak about this application? Seeing none. Going to go back to the board. Any, any questions?
None.
No.
Think it's pretty straightforward, so, again, there's no new nonconformities, it's basically going in exactly where the carport is, so.
Right.
Like to get a motion to close the public hearing, please.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
I just want to look at my checklist, I think we're all set. We are all set. Motion for the application, please.
Okay, motion relative to 105. Okay, motion relative to 105 Waterway. Owners Dominic J. and Kathleen A. Venuto request a written finding under 174-17 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a garage addition, extension to a pre-existing non-conforming structure on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 105 parcel 252 Mashpee, Mass. With the following conditions, number one, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mass General Laws 40A, section six. Number two, site plan prepared for Dominic Venuto, 105 Waterway Mashpee, Mass. Prepared by Cape and Islands Engineer, title Garage Enclosure Plan, date 12/16/24. Add Garage Enclosure and Flood Vent Requirement 1725. Add Zoning Table 11025. Update owner, stamped and signed by Matthew Costa, Land Surveyor, number 52282, and Mark Dibb, Civil Engineer, number 45937. Exhibits prepared by Dominic J. Venuto. Number four, condition on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Conservation Department and Board of Health. Number five, any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board. Number six, condition that the applicant seek and obtain the Building Department review in reference to the tree bylaw, chapter 175 of the town bylaws, prior to the application of a building permit. Number seven, board finds under 174-17 and 174-33 that the proposed project is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing non-conforming structure or used to either the town or to the neighborhood.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you very much, thank you. Excuse me, so we have to wait 20 days?
Twenty-one days, I think it is, from the time she files it with town clerk.
Tomorrow, right?
Yeah.
Could be weeks, I'm just kidding.
Thank you.
Oh, really?
I'm just saying. Okay, so leaves him closed, an open space.
Okay, here we go. So. Is it signed in two places or just one? Okay, I see this kinda Xed, you want me to sign that?
Yes, please.
You can have that. What's that? I don't think so, that's junk. That's junk. So that's the actual signature page. Michael, why don't you re, you know what, I don't, I just wanna give you a shot. In preparation for your tomorrow's job, you know what I'm saying?
So we're up to, uh.
Simon's narrow, I think.
Yeah, zero. Don't deserve a number.
I never, I, I thought I was printing the wrong page.
One and two were taken, I guess, anyway. Zero Simons Narrows Road, owner John W. Cummings, trustee of the Cummings Family TST Non-Exempt Trust, request a special permit under 174-25H7 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to allow for a 20-foot by 12-foot garage on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 84, parcel 20 Mashpee, Massachusetts.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Ryan Douglas, associate at Ruben &amp; Rudman, 53 State Street, Boston, Massachusetts. Here tonight on behalf of John Cummings, the applicant, and the owner of Zero Simons Narrows Road. As was just stated, we're requesting a special permit and setback relief to allow a garage to serve as the principal structure on this lot, and setback relief to allow the garage to be 25 feet from the wetlands rather than 50 feet. So just, just for background, I mean, the property is just under 39,000 square feet, it's located at the end of a cul-de-sac in an R3 residential district. It's currently undeveloped, except for a pre-existing dock that's there. It was built in 1983, and there's no existing habitable structures on the lot, in fact, there's no structures on the lot. And it's historically been used as a point to access the water for recreational activities, kayaking, canoeing, things of that nature. Given that the property has no residential dwelling and no structures at all, the garage would serve as the principal structure on this lot. And it will be used exclusively for non-commercial recreational storage, personal, personal storage for the recreational items. The, the garage is, is proposed at 20 by 12 feet, so 240 square feet total, with a four-by-six access ramp. It's designed for recreational storage only, and there will be zero outside storage, all interior storage. The structure will be built on top of sonotube foundations to minimize site disturbance and comply with flood zone requirements. And additionally, the height of the garage is 14 feet 6 inches, which means that it's below the 15-foot maximum allowed under the bylaw. It'll be 25 feet from the bordering vegetated wetlands and 40 feet from the mean high-water mark. And importantly, this, this project meets all dimensional requirements, except for the wetland setback. And I, I will say that on the wetlands level, this has already passed approval from the ConCom, we have an approved order of conditions. So the, you know, look, the bylaw allows for a garage as a principal structure under 174-25H7, when there is no residential development that's feasible on a lot. And that's the case here, the garage will be used exclusively, again, for personal storage. It will not contain any plumbing, it will have no mechanical systems, it will have no habitable space. It is, it is, in essence, a shed, but it's, it's a garage. It is also consistent with the area, as I believe that there was something similar that was issued recently at 353 Simons Narrows Road, under, under the same section of the bylaw. Then when it comes to the setback relief, you know, firstly, again, the Conservation Commission has already reviewed and approved the project, confirming that it, look, this does not pose any environmental harm. We are operating here under an approved OOC, already been issued. The garage is designed to avoid ground disturbance using the sonotube foundations, rather than a full foundation. And as part of this project, additionally, there is going to be 420 feet of wetland restoration that occurs. So native vegetation will be planted to offset any potential environmental impact, though the ConCom found that there would be no impact. The garage will also be properly anchored to withstand, you know, flooding conditions, and two flood vents will be installed, one on each side, in accordance with the bylaws and the WPA. So in short, we, we do believe that this project meets the legal and practical standards here for, for approval, and we would respectfully request the, the relief asked, thank you.
Charlie, would you read any letters into the record, please?
We have, Board of Health and Conservation. Board of Health relative to, uh, where are we, running lightweight? Board of Health.
Zero. Zero.
Zero Simons Road. Board of Health, no comment, no water or plumbing to be attached. Conservation Department relative to Zero Simons Narrows Road. Resource areas Buffett to Salt Marsh, Buffett to BVM, and LS CSF. NOI application was approved in 2022, with an extension approved by the commission to 2028. Storage shed with port fences was approved due to gravel base underneath, with the sonotube installation will not impact the functions of the resource areas and buffer zones to resource areas on site, and nothing else.
That takes that? David, I'd like to hear from you on this one.
Okay, um. Um, I'm, I like the project, believe it or not, but, um, it is, um, it is, there are certain things about it that, you know, it, it is an unbuildable lot. I did talk to, when the neighbors came in, the closest neighbors came in, they gave me a little education on the dock, the dock was actually built by Army Corps engineers to launch boats there in case, you know, attack on the United States. So it was, it's a well-built dock, it's been there before any zoning was there. You look at the setbacks, you look at the circle there and say, jeez, this is not, it's not setback from the road. But it, the, the, the property line is that dotted line, so it's like 60 feet from the, from the front, from the road.
I see, ah, I see.
So it looks like, you know, this shouldn't be approved, but it very much should be.
So Mitchell's landing circle is not a way.
Right. So, you know, there's a lot going on here.
That's why I went directly to you.
Yeah, 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 I mean, this is very approvable, you know, he did a good job with his presentation, but, you know, 'cause he looks at wetlands like the rest of the world does, but except for Mashpee, he is in a flood zone, so that is in the wetland, so he's, the lot coverage is 100. This is an unbuildable lot, and, and the, the dock was there prior to, you know, the principal use thing, so I think this should be approved, this, uh, shed should be approved. And the thing about a garage, it, it is, the thing about another weird situation is it's over 200 square feet, so you need to get a building permit for that. And with that, you have to conform to the building codes, which is another good thing about this, because it's in the flood zone, it needs to be anchored down, it needs to meet the high wind velocity, velocity that we have in Mashpee. So it'll be built according to building codes where a shed at two, you know, 200 square feet.
Right.
Wouldn't have to.
So the whole lot, though, is not a flood zone?
The whole lot is.
So if the whole lot is a flood zone, that means he has no square footage on the lot.
Correct, he needs, um.
Does he need a variance?
He needs a variance then.
I mean, I'll leave that up to you, the other zoning enforcement.
I don't, I don't believe so, because here, because it is an unbuildable lot, and it's allowed through, what is stated here is a private one, two, two-car garage, greenhouse or dock, as a principal use where it cannot be developed. So I don't think it needs, I think it needs a special.
You're the zoning enforcement officer, so we're gonna, I'm gonna go with your lead, but I'm just sitting here saying.
The verbiage doesn't match where, 'cause it's not a garage to park a car or anything else, there's no mechanicals in there, it'll never be habitable, I think it only needs a special permit, I do not believe it needs a variance.
Well, it is my opinion, you have the right to make that call, you're the zoning enforcement officer, I just, I get a little concerned over the, over the unbuildable lots in town that are all, that have nothing on them.
This is not for, this is not for dwelling.
I get it, I get it, I get it, I'm leaving that decision up to you.
One last thing, full disclosure, both lots, abutting lots, same owners, so it's serving two, two lots, so I don't see, I don't have any problem with that, even though.
So you do not feel it needs a variance?
I do not feel it needs a variance.
So sir, I, um.
Can I ask a question? It, my understanding is that the shed or barn is being used for storage of personal property of those that own the lot.
That's correct.
As a what-if, what if someone decides to change the purpose for which the barn is there?
They can.
They cannot.
It's not, it's not a buildable lot, this allows.
Why wouldn't they just combine this lot, are you all set, Charlie?
Yeah, I'm all set.
Why wouldn't they just combine this lot with one of the abutting lots, and then it wouldn't be the only, the only structure on the lot, it would be an accessory structure on the lot, and it would be easier?
Well, again, it's, it's a separate lot, like a lot of places in Monmouth, Skoye, and say, say, so concert, people own the lot on the water.
Yeah.
That's where their dock is, and they own the house across the street, this allows them to put a, put a garage with no.
So let's cut to the chase, does he need a variance or not?
No.
No. So I have a question, sir, can you give me the amount of relief then, setback to wetlands, what are you looking for specifically in relief?
So, again.
Requires 50.
Yeah, so it requires 50, we're gonna be 25.
So you're looking for 25-foot of relief?
We're looking for 25.
What other relief?
You, you need 50.
We need 50, sorry, we need 50 of, of relief, yeah, so.
So your relief is 25 feet, though?
Y- yes.
You're 25 feet from the wetlands, correct?
We're gonna be 25 feet from the wetlands.
So they're asking for relief in the amount of 25 feet?
Again, he's looking at.
Oh, he's in the flood zone.
He's looking at the wetlands like everybody else.
Yeah, no, you're in the flood zone, you're looking at 100%.
In the town of Mashpee, if you're in a flood zone.
We don't get into the.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm just, historically in the past, we used to ask for distance and the amount of relief, your relief is really 50 feet.
Right, okay.
All right, what other relief of you, are you seeking?
So the, the only other relief that we're seeking is that we can call the, the garage the primary structure.
That's up to the zoning enforcement officer.
And that's, and that's all we're asking.
We're not making that decision, he is.
I'm, again, I'm fine with it.
He, you know what, we're, this board is, is here not to make a decision whether it's primary, secondary, or anything else, zoning enforcement officer makes that decision.
Understood, understood, sir.
And I, and I, you agree with me, we're not, that's not our job. All right.
Best thing about it is nothing else is gonna be put here, so that's, I mean, there's a lot of positives.
All right, so we've read the letter agencies, board questions, letters from Butters, David, audience input, anyone in the audience having to say, yes ma'am, could you come up and tell us your name and your address and speak your piece, please?
My name is Pamela Berman, I live at 11 Shoestring Bay Road. My property abuts Simons Narrows Road, abuts Mr. Cummings' property, and we have had a significant removal of trees for the development of a very large house that is going literally behind my house, right up to my property line. I now am looking on the water, I never had a view of the water, and what is being proposed, the first question I have to ask is, how many more trees are gonna be removed to do this?
Well, there is a tree bylaw in town, I presume this is under the tree bylaw?
She's talking about one, one mute swan, am I, am I telling?
One mute swan, correct.
Oh, I see, you're not speaking about this specific application?
Yes, I am, because this is next property down.
So you're asking how many trees will be removed on zero, which is this lot?
On zero, yes, please.
I believe none.
So this is going to be right where the, the tree line stops and the wetlands start?
If you wanna take a look, it's, it's right up the shore.
There, there will be no trees removed.
There are no trees though.
So you're making a statement of, you're going on record saying you're not gonna remove any trees?
It's my understanding that we're not removing trees for this.
In, in the motion, it will be covered by the tree bylaw.
Yeah.
All right, so at this point, the applicant is saying zero trees will be removed as part of the record.
I have another comment to make.
Certainly.
I've lived there for 22 years, I have seen people driving up and down Simons Narrows Road, down to the dock, they do not belong there, there are drug deals that are going on down there, I have notified the police department, but by the time I call them and they get there, it's gone. It's been going on, it went on again this weekend, I took video of it, and my only concern is, because it affects me and the people, there are kids climbing in the dumpsters, playing in the dumpsters, it's a really bad situation, and nobody's there monitoring it, the gate is always open, it is never closed, and that gate is supposed to be closed and locked, except for the contractors who are going down there. I have called over to, can't even think of their name right now.
If I may, I'm missing something, though, the contractors have not started on his property, I would presume, 'cause you haven't been building.
No, Mr. Cummings.
They have not.
Mr. Cummings contractor for the other side of the road has an almost complete.
That's not you, correct?
That's not me, we're, we're.
So we're here today for zero, that's all we have, we can talk about?
This is a very minute issue that we're here for today, just for zero.
It is not in the purview of this board to talk about another application, unless you choose to come back and go later.
The dumpsters for the, the houses being built across the street.
On Simons.
Okay, well, I can deal with that.
Can you?
Yes.
I would recommend.
I already called the health department.
The gate is, from my understanding, is going to be closed, I don't know why.
I would recommend you reach out to the zoning enforcement officer tomorrow, the next day, and I think between the two of you, you could probably work something out, but this board has no authority in that area.
No, I'm, I understand this building that's going there, I'm just concerned about more trees being removed and the number of people.
He's on the record that there will be no trees removed. He's on the record that there will be no trees removed.
Yeah, I said, it's my understanding that there's not any trees.
Well, you just put on the record saying there's not gonna be any.
I, if you go back, I says...
Then that will be part of the motion.
Will that also be part of the record?
Yeah, right. No, I disagree.
It's okay.
I'm just teasing. All I wanna do is try to preserve as much as I possibly can from my side.
Guys, let's stay in line.
And I know...
All right, just, if you can just meet with him tomorrow, the next day, I think you can deal with that other issue.
All right.
Do you have anything else you'd like to say?
Nope.
Thank you for your input.
I know.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience like to give any input on this application? Sheen, thank you. Okay, board have any other questions?
I would like to hear Chris's opinion on whether a variance is needed.
I don't think that's the right thing to do. I don't, I'm sorry to say this, but I don't care what Chris's opinion is.
I'm sure you don't.
I don't.
I'm not gonna...
Chris, I didn't see you. I don't think to do with this.
Okay.
I don't...
I would love Chris's opinion.
Again, I mean, I think it's, I think it's better than the alternative, just people just scattering stuff all around the yard and doing drugs and making drug deals.
All mine is, is, I've asked the audience, if somebody wants to speak, Chris is in the audience, he can speak up if he chooses to. I'm not asking for his opinion. I'm not trying to trump you. If you really want it, you have a right to it, I guess.
I know what his body language is.
Yeah. I'm not trying to, if, I'm not trying to...
Actually, I have, yeah, no, 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 but I have mixed opinions too.
Wait, is Chris and Mashpee resident?
Well, I, I, no, he's not.
You guys can't speak then.
Anybody in the audience?
Anybody in the audience can speak. All right, so let's move this question.
All right.
Anybody else on the board have any questions, issues or concerns?
Just as far as the motion is concerned, the motion will not contain any number relative to trees. It'll just say compliance with the tree bylaw.
Yeah, sure.
That, you make the...
Exactly right.
All right.
All right, anything else?
Nope.
David, you have anything else?
No, I'm good.
And Sharon, I'm not trying to trump you. You do what you want.
Yeah, I, I don't feel comfortable with this.
All right, laws.
Yeah.
That's fine. All right, so that being said, I'd like to get a motion to close the public hearing, please.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
I'd like to get a motion to reference the application, please.
Yep. Relative to zero, Simon's Narrows Road. Owner, John W. Cummings, trustee of the Cummings Family GST Non-Exempt Trust, requests a special permit under 17425 H. seven and 17433 of the zoning bylaws allow for a twenty-foot by twelve-foot garage on property located in an R3 zoning district, map eighty-four, parcel twenty, Mashpee, Mass., with the following conditions. Number one, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a special permit under Mass. General Laws forty A, section nine. Number two, plot plan. Prepared for Simon's Narrows LLC, project zero, Simon's Narrows Road, Mashpee, Mass., sheet number one of one, date November thirty, two thousand twenty-one, prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering, title, proposed storage shed stamped and signed by Matt Costal and surveyor number five, two-two-eight-two, and Raoul Lizard de Rivera, civil engineer number four-five-eight-four-five. Number three, building plan, proposed storage shed, prepared for John Cummings by Mark S. McCarthy, scale one-quarter inch, equals one foot, A1, plan views and exterior elevations, date February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five. Condition on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Board of Health and Conservation Department comments. Number five, any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board. Number six, condition that the applicant seek and obtain the building department review in reference to the tree bylaw, chapter one seventy-five of the town bylaws, prior to the application of a building permit. Number seven, the board finds under 17425 H. seven and 17433 that the proposed storage shed cannot be developed with a principal residential use, provided there be no commercial use of storage, no sanitary facilities, no storage outside of buildings, that no structure exceeds fifteen feet in height, and that all applicable setbacks and lot coverage requirements are met and approved for the use by the zoning Board of Appeals.
Well, I just wanna see, if you wanna ask that question, I'm not trying to negate your...
No, I already have my own opinion without asking him his question.
All right, good. All right. So, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, and one second. Mike?
Are you asking me a question, or...
No, I'm just asking, because somebody may not...
Row call, vote.
Favor someone do a row call.
Okay, yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Ron's, yes?
No.
Okay, so we have a four to one.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Have a great day.
You too. I'll have to come back down when the weather is this nice again.
I just didn't, I don't...
Yeah, no, I hadn't this, that opinion. I just wanted him to reinforce my opinion.
I didn't have a position for asking legal opinions. Or do you live, Chris?
No, I had to say...
I mean, you have a right.
I had that opinion regardless of weather.
Okay. Okay. Nothing's hard, dude. Bing, bing.
Oh, that's good.
Oh, were you signing? You got any other paper?
That would be really funny.
You can't wait to, you can't wait to it?
Uh, yeah, let's come back. Let's come back.
It's like a disaster.
I don't need that.
You got it. There you go. Don't, you need that. Yep. This is something, too. There you go. Jeez, what happened to this applicant, huh? Come on, what happened? I'm signing like a lot.
Lots of pieces of paper today.
All right. Michael, would you like to read Nine Running Light Way?
Sure. Nine Running Light Way owners Stanislav and Arena Bertacevsky request a modification to an approved permit findings two-zero-two-three-five-three under one-seventy-four-seven of the zoning bylaws to allow for an existing deck to remain on property located in an R3 zoning district, map one-eleven, parcel sixty-five, Mashpee, Massachusetts. Nine Running Light Way owners Stanislav and Arena Bertacevsky request variance relief from lot coverage under one-seventy-four-thirty-one of the zoning bylaws to allow for the existing deck to remain. The existing lot coverage is nineteen point nine percent, and the proposed lot coverage is twenty-three point eight percent on property located in an R3 zoning district, map one-eleven, parcel sixty-five, Mashpee, Massachusetts.
Good evening, Mr. Chair members of the board. Again, for the record, attorney Chris Corain. With me tonight is Arena Bertacevsky. She is and her husband are owners of Nine Running Light Way in New Seaberry. This project was, came before this board as an addition to an existing single-family structure, seeking a written finding. That board approved that written finding, and one of the conditions was that the deck had to be removed, because at that point in time, we needed to offset the lot coverage. In order to bring the lot coverage down to what was required by the, by the town, by the bylaw, we had to make the deck a patio. We're here tonight because Arena contacted me, I think she had talked to Dave originally, and to see if she could keep the deck to help, basically as an accommodation for her elderly parents. As part of my presentation that I submitted to the board, I don't know if it was part of the public record that Mary has, but there was a letter from Arena to David that goes over the handicap and disability that her parents have, and that the accommodation of allowing the deck, allowing the lot coverage to exceed, would be reasonable in this particular, in this specific case. So the reason it's a modification, obviously, is because we're coming back to the board, because we have to, we're looking for a change to the site plan. In accordance with that, because it's gonna, if we allow the deck, it would be above the lot coverage allowed, we also need to seek the variance. So that's why you have these two applications. So, again, Arena's parents are eighty, eighty-six and eighty-five years old. Her father has Parkinson's.
Yeah, my father has Parkinson's.
So if you have, if you have a patio, that requires steps down to the patio. Her parents cannot traverse the steps safely, given that they can't enjoy the outside. Like, the deck will provide them use and enjoyment of the outside. So that's where the substantial hardship comes into play. I provided the board a case that I had found regarding disabilities, fair housing, the bylaw. I'd also note that forty A, section three, which is the Statutory Zoning Enabling Act, talks about that bylaws, ordinances, boards should not discriminate against people with handicaps. And so if you read the case, it talks about viewing it as, is the accommodation necessary for the plaintiffs, well, if it's a court case, and that if without the accommodation, they will likely be denied equal opportunity to enjoy the housing of their choice, which is what we have here, because Arena's parents cannot enjoy the full use of the house without this accommodation. They, you know, Arena can, I have her up here, she can certainly tell the story better than I can, but her parents would be basically stuck in this house if they can't use the outside, or couldn't use the deck. And so this would allow them that enjoyment. So I know I focused on the substantial hardship, because that's one of the four items. For the other three, I would note, if you look at that lot, it's obviously, you know, in my opinion, it's a unique lot. It's not a typical square lot. You have Running Light Way that runs as a curve through it, so we do have a unique shape for this particular, this lot. I would suggest that it would, does not either derogate from the intent of the bylaw or cause a detriment to the public good, because, again, there's, there's a structure there. If it's not a deck, it's gonna be a patio. So we're not really changing anything as far as there being disturbance to that area. And we're not asking for any setback relief, so we're not increasing density. It's not gonna affect any of the neighbors if we have a deck there that's at twenty-three point eight percent lock coverage, or we have a patio there that's on the flush and we're nineteen point eight percent lock coverage. No one really, no one's gonna be affected by that. Again, we're not, you know, pushing things out or asking things to get closer to other neighbors. So on those two points, I would suggest that, you know, we're not derogating from the intent of the bylaw, we're not gonna be a detriment to the public good. I think the board can look at this as a hardship. I think they can look at it from a disability perspective and a reasonable accommodation. So, you know, that's, you know, where I am tonight, and bringing that to this board, and I'm happy to answer any questions. If they would like, you know, any questions for Arena and her parents, you know, she's happy to, you know, answer any questions.
Okay, David, Charlie, would you read into the record letters, please?
Two, no, one conservation, one Board of Health. Conservation, not within wetland jurisdiction. Board of Health, no comment, no habitable space. So those are the only two that we have, I believe.
Okay.
Could I ask a question? And I understand, you know, the issue with your folks and being able to utilize the property with them staying with you. And I confess, it's my lack of understanding about what the law requires. Is the disability problem, a problem that must reside within the owner, or must, can it reside within the owner's family? And I ask that simply because I don't know.
Right. I mean, we're obviously asking for it as part of a family, or parents live, I mean, Arena can say, they may not be the owner, but they're certainly utilizing the house on a significant basis.
And I'm not minimizing the fact that it's important, but I just didn't know legally whether it makes a difference.
Right.
Okay.
No idea.
I have, I spent twenty or thirty minutes reading the case law. I should have, if I had time, I would have spent the three or four required hours, because that's what it would have taken to really dive into it. I have some things I'll read off it that I have some questions about.
I was just gonna ask you, when you say the case law, is something brought in front of...
Yes, so Chris, at about, I don't know, noon time today, sent to the board, case law.
I didn't get a chance to go through it.
Yeah, I read it for like twenty or thirty minutes, and he, you know, pointed out what his issues were in this, but in supplying it all, there are some other notes in here that are probably counterproductive to your case. So it's like every zoning issue in this world.
Right.
There's this and there's that. And so we have to, that's why we're a board that has to make decisions.
Right.
And so I will point those out, but what I'd like to do is, David, what is your opinion, then I'd like to go in on?
Well, you know, like, like Chris said, this was approved with the deck being turned into a patio. We understand that. And I'm looking at this, and you got the deck down one step, and you got another step going, so it's three steps? I mean, to make, how about in the front, the front porch, do they have, how many steps on the front porch? You know, I mean, what I'm trying to say is, if a ramp could be put in, and it wouldn't, it wouldn't even need approval by the board, I could approve a ramp for handicap, and it wouldn't cost against, that's done by right. And that could be taken out.
I was gonna raise the same issue, because you have to enter the home with two or three steps.
Right.
I've gotta presume that the deck, at this point in time, is down one step? I mean, the, the, I'm sorry, probably down two or three steps?
No.
Not the existing deck.
And even the ramps, even when you get a permit, the fee is...
So if you were to, if you were to go from inside the house to outside the house, it's like a slider.
Okay.
So they can go in and out. They don't have to traverse, to down into the front, into the backyard, I don't know, there may be steps from the deck into the backyard, but they're not looking to traverse down into the backyard.
I'm saying, if you took the deck out, how far is it from the top of that deck, the top of the floor down?
Three steps. I would say two or three steps. It would be three steps.
So I would, how many steps are, do you have entering your house? Two or three steps?
It is one step, but the thing is that they do not leave the house. They're literally living, like, stuck in the house. When we have to take them to the appointments, it's a lot of help that we're bringing them in and out. We're not talking about that.
I'm just trying to think, would a ramp work?
Yeah, but their normal day, they're just in the house, and the only way for them, like, to see outside, and what they're doing now, they just go outside to the deck. They never actually go off the deck. It's too dangerous for them. I mean, they wouldn't be able to do it. My father's working ability has significantly deteriorated even within this last year of us going through the permits. So he's like literally not lifting his feet, he's just sliding on the floor, doing one little step at a time. He cannot traverse any stairs, and he has balance issue.
They're literally living, like, stuck in the house. When we have to take him, them to the appointments, it's a, it's a lot of help that we're bringing them in and out. We're not talking about that.
I'm just trying to think, would a ramp work?
Yeah, but their normal day, they're just in the house, and the only way for them, like, to see outside, and what they're doing now, they just go outside to the deck. They never actually go off the deck. It's too dangerous for them. I mean, they wouldn't be able to do it. My father's working ability has significantly deteriorated even within this last year of us going through the permits. So he's like literally not lifting his feet, he's just sliding on the floor, doing one little step at a time. He cannot traverse any stairs, and he has balance issue. So, basically, if we have even two steps to the patio, they'll be stuck inside the house, like, completely.
Okay, so, I don't counsel, if you wanna get into case law, I'm willing to do so.
Yeah, I mean, this, this case, uh, this was a variance that was denied, so I'll, you know, be completely upfront. What this case was about was somebody, there was an existing structure, the individual who owned it wanted to expand it, I think, make it bigger, maybe go up, and the court basically said, they denied the variance, because he could still use and enjoy the house as is. The required expansion didn't deprive him of the use and enjoyment of the house. So what I'm arguing is though, is that, you know, not being able to be outside is a denial of the use and enjoyment of the property, as compared to other, you know, able-bodied. If, if I could be at that house, I could use the outside, 'cause I can traverse down the steps. So there's a difference there, I think.
Ah, yeah, but, let me just read one aspect of the case law you gave to us. McGarrel additionally maintained that his chronic emphysema created a hardship that justified the variance. As a general matter, as a general, yes, a general matter, a hardship resulting from a personal condition, or characteristic of the owner, rather than from conditions affecting the land itself, is not a valid basis for a variance. A variance applies to the land rather to the current owner, and runs with the land when it's conveyed to another person. That is Huntington versus Board of Appeals of Hadley.
We just went through this.
But I think you gotta adjust this, I'm sorry.
No, we just went through the, uh, that whole section you read a couple weeks ago, right? And it pertained particularly to this. And it was pretty clear.
Yeah, it's kind of, yeah, I'm just, this is, yeah, I mean, it is. It, you can read this case law, and I can see where he's coming from, and I can see where he's got an issue, meaning that the board could find not in his favor. And that's typical zoning issues. And so, it is up to this board to make a decision, but I can tell you, this case law goes both ways.
Yeah, I think you could make an argument either way.
It cuts both ways.
When you, when you look at what, you know, and this is why I'm, you know, I don't like, you know, just taking the Bobrovsky book and, you know, looking at footnotes, you need to actually take a case like this and read it, you know, it talks about, it's not just about the four criteria. This case also reflects on anti-discrimination laws and reasonable accommodations.
But it also states about Boston's own zoning bylaw that has different criteria in it for variances.
Correct.
Now, I said, they go, oh, which Town of Mashpee doesn't have.
Right. But again, if you look at, you know, they cite, obviously, you know, I don't know to what relevance the fair hous, or what jurisdiction the Fair Housing Act has on this, but, again, it makes it unlawful to discriminate in the sale or rental, always make unavailable or deny a dwelling to any buyer or renter because of a handicap, and defines discrimination to include a refusal to make reasonable accommodations in rules, policies, practices, or services, when such accommodations may be necessary to afford such equal opportunity to use and enjoy a dwelling. And I think that's really what it's about.
So I have a couple more questions.
You're talking about an interpretation of the law that's different?
Yeah, and I mean, like I said, I, I've read the case law, it goes both ways. It really does. Now, how about if this deck was made small? Pretty large deck. What about if we struck a little balance that maybe, and, and I'm not speaking for the rest of the board?
Right.
But why do we need a board, a, a deck that's, it's a large, it's a large deck?
Yeah, but they're at nineteen point nine run.
Oh, they're?
I don't think you could make it any smaller and still come under the twenty, that's the issue.
I wouldn't, I think, again, if they wanna go for the variance, the variance, the, the, the modification stems on the variance, you granting the variance, and I think we're not being unreasonable by suggesting a ramp for them to get out. Um, that does not prevent them from going outside. The ramp enables them to.
Right, so I think the, the problem.
I think we could, that's a plan B if this gets shut down, that's what I'm saying.
My, I, I'm not a builder, and I don't know what the, I'm assuming that, you know, based on the entrance to where you need to go, the ramp has to be at such and such a slope.
Yeah, but it, it could be a half an inch, it could be a half an inch fall, I mean, they could walk down.
And you can rent ramps, you don't even have to buy them.
I'm very familiar with that.
I don't really, I don't really picture how my father can go down the ramp.
Yeah, but if it's a half an inch, you, you wouldn't even notice it. You know, I mean, it could be, it could be, you know, twenty-four feet long, and, and you wouldn't notice it, still be on the patio.
For a normal person, but not, uh, for somebody who can.
I mean, I, I, okay.
Why don't we, why don't we keep this moving? I've got two board questions. So David, do you wanna say anything else? I'm gonna go to the audience.
No, I, I, no, I, I've tried to make my point.
I think you've made it. Audience, anyone in the audience like to speak about this application?
Uh, I actually have one.
One second, just wanna go to the audience.
Sure.
I will go back to you. Yes, what would you like, no one in the audience, thank you, yes, what would you like to say?
Just wanted to add one little detail, like, I've been talking about my father, who has like physical disability to walk. My mother, she, she has problems working, but for her, it would be doable, but she has Alzheimer's, and because we have this house, like, for thirteen years, so for thirteen years, she's used to going to the deck the way it is. If something has changed, I don't think she's able to comprehend changes in the surrounding. It doesn't stick to her anymore.
Hasn't she had, has she had this issue for the last year?
No, it's been since, uh, maybe, it's been going for five years, but it's deteriorating.
I understand, but when you got the application to, to do your work at the house a year ago, when you were told you're gonna have to tear the, your deck down.
I didn't.
At that point would've been the time to say, I'm either gonna not tear the deck down and not add on to the house to this degree, or make the decision at that point. You made a decision at that point to add on the house to this degree, and to tear a deck down.
Yeah.
And she was sick, I presume, at that time.
You're right, but unfortunately, the Alzheimer's thing that going like down the hill.
And I feel bad, and I, I wish, I don't wish that on anyone, and I, and I wish you didn't have to go through it, or anyone else would have to go through it. But, as a board, we need to look at options, et cetera, and what we can and cannot do. I'm just saying that, approximately a year ago, you made a decision to add on to your house, and with that, you had to tear off a deck.
A year ago, it wasn't that obvious for me, to tell you the truth.
Am I, I guess, again, I, Dave knows this much better than I do, but when you build a ramp, I assume it's gotta, you know, it's gotta be a cer, a certain length, I don't know how long a ramp would have to be.
Well, it depends.
That would take out some of the abilities.
Well, but that depends if you build that ramp to handicap exact accessibility. You can adjust that ramp to her father's needs. You see, he, i- if he's gonna inspect it to make sure it meets handicap, he's gonna tell you a quarter of whatever it is. But you can build that ramp whatever you choose to make it, which would be less steep, let's say, or more steep, more steep, but would get him down to the deck, because he may not have the necessity to have that built to specific handicap criteria.
Or you can rent a ramp, and you don't need any permits.
Yeah. I mean, I think, I think there's some options, you know how we are in reference to lock coverage.
I understand, you know, but I guess what Arina's saying too is that, you know, even having a ramp, her father couldn't traverse that by himself.
He cannot, then you have to have some railings, and I, I, I don't know, I don't think he'll be able to do it.
But, but, even the, correct me if I'm wrong, the deck is, is a step down right now?
No.
It's flush with it?
Yeah, I, I have the pictures.
Really? Let me see it. Completely flush.
Yeah, it's completely flush.
So it can't be more than sixteen inches.
Wow.
Off the ground.
Yeah?
I mean, it's, it's amazing, you would think you'd get snow in the house, or whatever.
And would do, believe me.
Yeah?
Yeah.
So, you know, we're trying to keep it, you know, what's there.
I get it, my only concern, the whole aspect of this, is if it was some time ago, but a year ago, you went and you've got, you know, an application to do a remodel at a house, from David, and at that point, I presume he told you, you had to give up a deck because of lock coverage, right?
Yeah, well, the board.
Yeah, we did, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so, we as a board did, in a written finding?
It was a written finding, yes.
Yeah, so in a written finding, we said you gotta give up the deck, what, was it a year ago, roughly?
Uh, yeah, within the, yeah, within the last.
It's still, it's still working.
Yeah, so my point is, at that point in time, you know, we were saying, yeah, you can do this, but you gotta give up the deck.
And they may not have been contemplating these familial issues, until you start building and start understanding how this is gonna work.
We're also removing a shot.
All right, I've gone to the board, I've gone to the audience, what would the board like to do?
Close the public hearing.
Well, I'm, but I, no, I wanna close.
I'd like to give it to her, being in a new common sense world, but the laws are the laws, and we've, unless we reinterpret the laws, given his new case, I don't see if there's any way around saying no.
And I, I think that there are options available that don't even require you having to come before us, that haven't been fully explored.
What do you feel, where do you feel? You might wanna withdraw, that's all I'm saying. You might wanna withdraw.
Withdraw?
He may want to. So you're, you're in agreement that the, that you're not in favor of the?
Yeah, I think there are options available that, that could accommodate this, this issue.
Karen, what do you think?
I don't think this is a very steep drop.
So, would you like us to vote?
No, I will, um, I'll withdraw it without prejudice, and talk to my client, and see if we, you know, if there's something else.
Maybe there's somewhere in between.
Right.
Or something.
Yep.
All right, so would you like, would you like to request a, a withdrawal without prejudice?
Yes, please.
Okay. So I'd like to get a motion for the applicant's request for a withdrawal without prejudice. So moved. I'd like to get a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Yes, I did that. Good job. All right. So, um, we have to sign some rules. Counsel, that was for actually both of those, right?
Yes.
I'm wondering if we have to make a vote, let's take a vote, so that was for the first one, that was for the modification.
You probably need to vote on both.
Yeah, would, so I presume you're asking for, uh, withdrawal without prejudice in reference to your variance?
Yes.
I'd like to get a motion for a, a withdrawal without prejudice on a variance. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right, so there's both of those, right?
Almost bless you. I choose, no bless you.
All right, so.
We have to sign something, right?
Next. Do you need to sign?
Yeah.
Okay, well.
I'll go follow your wind.
Okay.
Aye.
Whatever we gotta do.
Do we need to sign things?
No.
She doesn't have the power to follow your wind.
All right, so, Charlie, would you like to read five-two, four-two-five Monomoskoye Road?
Uh, number four-twenty-five Monomoskoye Road. Owners, Mark H. and Lisa White, request a special permit under one-seventy-four-seventeen-point-one and one-seventy-four-thirty-three of the zoning bylaws, to raise and replace a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family structure on property located in an R-three zoning district, map one-twenty-four parcel fifty-five Mashpee Mass.
Good evening again, members of the board. For the record, attorney Christopher Corain. Uh, with me today are the Whites, they're the, behind me here, they're the owners of the property of four-twenty-five Monomoskoye Road on Monomoskoye Island. They are seeking a special permit to raise and replace an existing single-family home under one-seventy-four dash seventeen-point-one, and under seven, one-seventy-four dash thirty-three. This property is located in the R-three zoning district, and it is completely within a flood zone, so it is within LSCSF. As the board knows, in the R-three zoning district, the lot minimum, lot size is, lot size is forty thousand square feet, lot front edge is a hundred and fifty feet, your front yard setback has to be forty, your side and rear is fifteen feet, your max lock coverage is twenty percent, your building height is thirty-five feet, and your setback to wetland is fifty feet. As this lot is wholly within the flood zone, we have the lot area nonconformity at zero, despite the fact that we actually have twenty thousand five-hundred-and-sixty-nine square feet of dry land. Uh, the setback to wetlands is zero, your lock coverage is a hundred percent. We also do have one, uh, other dimensional nonconformity, and that is the northerly side yard setback, which is twelve point four feet, where fifteen feet is required. The existing dwelling, um,'s coverage as a percentage of total lot area is fourteen point five percent, which is a conforming condition under our old method. The proposal would have a coverage as a, um, percentage of total lot area of eighteen percent, which would be under your twenty percent if we were treating this all as non-flood zone area. So we meet that requirement. Um, the home will be building code compliant, the home will be flood zone compliant, where existing is not. This project has been approved by the Conservation Commission, an IA septic system is proposed. There is stormwater management, we got confirmation that the dry wells are, uh, sized for a twenty-five year storm, according to Mark Dibb from Cape and Islands. So, and then, we are eliminating the side yard setback nonconformity, so there is that twelve point four side yard setback, it's going to fifteen point two feet, so that is a, a nonconformity that is being eliminated. We are not creating any new nonconformities, and we're not intensifying any existing ones other than lock coverage, 'cause the house is getting bigger, but, you know, we have no choice when we're at a hundred percent. Um, there, it's a residential, uh, district, residential use requires two parking spaces. If you look at the plan, you should see the driveway, plenty of space for two cars. Um, and, again, the final, uh, element or criteria for the raise and replace special permit is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. So again, we're eliminating one non, the nonconformity to the side yard setback, we're gonna be building code and flood zone compliant, we've been approved by the Conservation Commission, an IA septic system's going in, we're treating stormwater runoff, uh, the nonconformity's being eliminated, it's consistent with the development in the neighborhood, I took some pictures. This house is basically at the end of Monomoskoye Road, it's, you know, there are a lot of nice new houses that are down at that end, and I provided pictures to show that this is consistent with the, with the neighborhood. So with that, I'm happy to answer any of the board questions.
Um, Charlie, would you like to read the letters?
Yeah, we've got, uh, Board of Health comments and Conservation. Uh, Board of Health relative to four-twenty-five, uh, Monomoskoye Road, septic design for four bedrooms, floor plans submitted to twenty-four-twenty-five, show cased opening on office house has four bedrooms. Conservation, uh, four-twenty-five, Monomoskoye Road, resource areas, buffer zone to Saltmarsh, buffer zone to BBW, and LSCSF. NOI application was approved by the commission with the unanimous vote due to improvements to buffer zones and resource areas on site, with mitigation planting that includes multiple trees. Other improvements include an IA septic system, uh, installed flood compliant foundation, and dry wells for SWM.
That's the extent of letters? Okay. Board questions?
I drove by it the other day, I mean, it's, it's right out at the end.
Yep.
It's a long way to go for milk, I can tell you that.
Nice spot though, nice location.
David, Karen?
No, this is.
All right, David?
Um, I, the only concerns I would have would be building code issued, and not, not a concern with this board.
All right.
And this board did approve one across the street, uh, that we brought, about a year ago.
Yeah, I remember it. Anybody in the audience? She not okay? Again, I'm gonna go back to the board?
Yes.
I refer the neighbors, and we're, we're in support of it. Through the direct neighbors, four-twenty-nine.
Um, could you do me a favor, just come up to the mic, give your name, and your address, and just make that statement, please?
Sure, it's Suzanne Hertzag, four-twenty-nine Monomoskoye, and we're in support of the petition.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, I've looked at the drainage, fine, roof drainage going in, twenty-five year study is great, everything looks good.
No IA.
Yeah, IA, that's great. And the fact that it's, um...
Building code compliant.
Building code compliant, all makes sense to me.
Flood zone compliant.
All a big improvement. So, I'd like to get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion in reference to the application, please.
Okay, uh, motion relative to four-twenty-five Monomoskoye Road, owners Mark H. and Lisa White, request a special permit under one-seventy-four-seventeen-point-one and one-seventy-four-thirty-three of the zoning bylaws, to raise and replace a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family structure on property located in an R-three zoning district, map one-twenty-four parcel fifty-five Mashpee Mass, with the following conditions. Motion. The board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a special permit under Mash General laws forty-eight, section nine. Number two, lot plan, prepared for four-twenty-five Monomoskoye Road Mashpee Mass, prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering, date December twenty-two thousand twenty-three, revision date one-thirty-one twenty-four, reduce structure, relocate house further away from Saltmarsh, update mitigation calculation four-thirty twenty-four, revise driveway, add additional GW data, provide twice the required mitigation, twelve-two twenty-four, add column and breakaway panel wall note, twelve-thirteen twenty-four, add gravel, draw down areas one-thirty twenty-five, revise plan to four-bedroom. Number three. Building plans, 425 Monomoskoy Road, date January 22, 2025. A0 cover sheet. A1 basement plan. A2 first floor plan. A3 second floor plan. A4 elevations. A5 elevations. Prepared by Jeffrey Yates Architect LLC. Number four. Condition on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Board of Health and Conservation Department comments. Number five. Any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board. Number six. Condition that the applicant seek and obtain the building department review in reference to the tree bylaw, chapter 175 of the town bylaws prior to the application of a building permit. And number seven. The board finds under 174-17.1, 174-33 that the proposed project as submitted is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing conditions prior to removal of the existing structure. And that there is adequate land area on the subject lot to provide sufficient parking, and there are no new nonconformities being created.
Second.
You concur with that, no new nonconformities.
No new nonconformities being created.
So I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you so much.
Lot.
Crash. Sorry.
I don't know, they keep throwing things at me.
Yeah, I'm with you. There you go.
Yeah, that's their trash.
Getting me my bed. Me too. I haven't been sleeping. That's not good. You gotta get your sleep. You call us travel, I'm alone.
Okay, where are we?
383 51st.
All right. Well, set. Mike, would you like to read 383 Mashpee Neck Road, please?
Yes, 383 Mashpee Neck Road. Owners William D. and Bridget M. Cotter request a written finding 174-17 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to allow for a second floor addition and deck on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 90, parcel 58, Mashpee, Massachusetts.
Counselor?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Again, for the record, Attorney Christopher Corain, representing the owners of 383 Mashpee Neck Road. Uh, we've requested a continuance because this project needs to be reviewed by Conservation.
Okay, so when's the continuance until?
April 23rd.
Um, I'd like to state something at this point in time. I think now's the time to say it. And while you're here, Counselor, it's important to say it. Mary Ann is under a lot of stress, strain, or whatever with Tammy not being in. I'm gonna ask this board, I'm not gonna be here next meeting, as I've told you. Um, but I'm gonna ask Sharon to bring it up in that we may have to go one meeting a month.
I was made aware of that today.
Because I can tell you, she is gonna be, um, in a very bad way soon, because.
Better start at four, then.
Well, I mean, I, I can tell you that we're gonna have to go to one meeting. But I, we cannot take that vote at this point without being.
I think you just, we make sure that it gets on the agenda next, next meeting for discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, and then Sharon, you'll be overseeing that.
Okay.
But, so be careful when you're making these, because I'm presuming, question mark, that there may only be one meeting in April. Pick it. Right? And that's it.
I, I'm assuming that in our April. When's the next meeting?
Um, March 12th.
In the March 12th meeting, I'm assuming we'll probably have a motion to go to one meeting a month until further notice.
Until, yeah, and that means beginning in April, right? Or I presume, because you've already booked March, the second meeting?
Yeah.
So that will begin in April, I presume. That's a presumption, so be careful when you're booking April meetings. So when would it be?
But I agree with Mike.
That one, that right there, you need to sign that.
Maybe a time change.
No.
April what?
Might have to limit.
April 2nd, so.
No, April 23rd.
So you're asking for an extension till April 23rd?
This group, we're gonna have to need a timeout halfway through.
In reference to 383 Mashpee Neck Road, right?
Yes.
Gentlemen, so I'd like to get a motion to accept the applicant's request for an extension till April, I mean, yeah, April 23rd.
So moved.
Uh, for 383 Mashpee Neck Roads, written finding.
Moved.
We have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so it'll be April 23rd.
Also, Mary Ann, in other business for our next meeting, you might wanna talk about, um, not only potentially scheduling one meeting a month, but maybe changing the times, start times of the meeting, if possible, because it might be longer.
Yeah.
Than normal. It's gonna have to be, isn't it?
The only problem is, though, you don't, we really shouldn't get into this too deep, but you don't wanna have one meeting and make it longer and have her more. Our goal is to have her have less.
Limit, limit the number of hearings.
Exactly, so that she has.
I agree, I agree. Sorry, you're right.
Because if we double the time, we might as well have two meetings.
Nope, you're 100% right.
Then I can't come in too much earlier.
All right, so anyway, um. So do we, do we, is everything, oh, being signed, okay. Let's hope that they fill the position quickly.
Have they posted it? Has it been posted?
Okay. All right.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. Because if we have all the same amount of meetings and we just have one a month, there's no difference in the workload.
Let's just do 15-hour meetings, we'll do one.
So you're, you're left shorthanded. And there hasn't been anybody to attend the finance committee meetings to be at the secretary for months now.
Right, would you sign that, please?
Yeah.
So we can move forward? Well, you can tell he's a radio commentator, can't you? He just wants to talk and talk and talk.
I have a retirement job.
Difficult to assess the length of a hearing, though.
I know, I get it. Totally.
But if you're limited to X number of cases, yeah.
All right, so, um. Mike, would you like to read 41 Echo Road?
41 Echo Road, okay.
Is that the marijuana, please?
41 Echo Road. Owner Triple M Management LLC requests a modification of the special permit decisions, SP 2015-33 and SP 2019-36, under 17-24C9, little c, of the zoning bylaws to reflect current street address of property as 41 Echo Road, located in an 11 zoning district, map 19, parcel 3-8 and 3-9 Mashpee, Mass. Received letter of withdrawal from attorney.
Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'm just seeking withdrawal. I was, uh, had a directive to do something, and then from somebody other than the building department, and then the building department overruled that.
That being said, with or without prejudice?
It doesn't matter, you can, with prejudice if you want.
Like to have with prejudice?
Sure.
I, you know, off the table.
Right.
Like to get a motion to accept counsel's withdrawal with prejudice?
So moved.
To 41 Echo Road. Who's second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay.
Do we have, uh, something to sign for that?
That's what you've been signing.
Oh. Isn't that nice?
We signed before we approved.
That's very nice. Anticipation. Taking me for granted.
Other business.
Yes, other business, so. One second, Counselor.
No problem. There you go.
So Counselor, 48 Greenwood Road?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
You want us to read it into the record, or do you just wanna take over?
Just taking over its other business. It's a request for a minor modification. Uh, this was a raise and replace project that this board approved, uh, not that long ago. There have been some requested changes, um, that I laid out in my letter to the board. Um, they are, uh, so for, because it's on two roads. So, yeah, this project is on Beers Road and Greenwood Road. So if you look at the rear, um, the rear yard setback from Greenwood, what we're doing, what was proposed was kind of like a, a little bump out on the original plan. We're squaring that off and doing a cantilever. On the front yard setback to Beers Road, we're doing a cantilever. On the front yard to Greenwood, we're asking for a cantilever. Um, so all the setbacks will be, uh, in compliance. We allow for the two-foot cantilevers. We are increasing, um, lock coverage by a little bit, but it's within your 5% tolerance, which allows for a minor modification. So if you look at the bylaw, which is, uh, section 174, 24C, uh, 9B, it says that any proposed change to the site plan of a project, which in combination with previous modifications increases the square footage of residential or non-residential by more than 5%, we have to go through your standard public hearing notices and all of that, publishing and all of that. So this isn't that. We're not, we're not triggering the 5% threshold. So that's why we've asked it as a minor modification.
So where does, so where does it take it from what to what?
Uh, it takes it from 22.9% to 24.3%, which is under your 25% in the pop and asset overlay district.
So it seems to me, David, you're a key individual in the input on this issue. Your thoughts, please?
Yeah, I, I looked at the changes they come in and talked to me. I told them they, they need to come to the board. I do believe it's a minor modification.
Okay, do you wanna read any letters into the record?
Yeah, we have, we have letters from three of us.
Okay.
One received February 24th, 25, uh, from Athena and Spyros Ginaros. Owners at 77 Shore Drive, uh, to the right of 48 Greenwood Road. Uh, have reviewed the proposed minor changes for 48 Greenwood Road. No objection to the changes of the approved plan. Supportive of the project, have been consulted by the Masters and look forward to the project. Spyros and Athena Ginaros. Second letter is a, a letter from, uh, Paul and Kathleen Betancourt dated February 20th, 2025. Uh, we are the owners of 20 Beers Road Mashpee, which is the home situated directly behind the backyard of 48 Greenwood Road. Have reviewed the proposed minor changes for 48 Greenwood Road. Have no objection to the changes of the approved plan. Take this letter into consideration. Thank you, Paul and Kathleen Betancourt. And the third is a letter dated February 20th, 2025, to the Zoning Board of Appeals, uh, from John and Margaret McKinnon. We are the owners of 49 Greenwood Road Mashpee, which is the home situated directly across the street of 48 Greenwood Road. Have reviewed the proposed minor changes for 48 Greenwood Road. Have no objections to the changes of the approved plan. Please take this letter into consideration.
Anything else?
Nothing.
Is that it, Mary Ann?
So if I can just note one other thing, there are some architectural design features, just to the look of the house, so like, you know, I just kinda wanted to, more of us take a quick look. So if I just, there are some architectural design changes.
So tell me specifically, please, is there any change to a setback, to any, any, you know, zoning that we should be aware of?
No, as I said, the lock coverage is gonna increase slightly, but still under your 25%. Under 25. We are getting closer to your 15 feet, but we're not creating any new nonconformities.
There's still 15 feet to less.
We're still 15 feet. There is a cantilever, but that's a lot under your bylaw.
I get it.
So we're not, we're not going from 15 feet to 14 feet with a setback or anything like that.
Okay.
So everything's being covered by a cantilever. If it's getting closer.
If I may add, Dan Masters is the owner of the property of 48 Greenwood. Uh, one other thing we are doing too as well is we're removing a shed on the plant too as well, to help mitigate.
Were you removing it before?
No, no, that was going to remain.
So the fact that you removed the shed, did that keep you below the 25%?
Correct, yeah, they had to offset the increase with the, with the shed coming out.
So now that, that, that re, the removal offset so that you stayed under the 25?
Correct, exactly. And based on, you know, our other, uh, some of the other times I've come before this board, you know, I did have the, have Dan go and get his neighbors, because obviously the board is concerned about people knowing what's going on, and without a public notice, they wouldn't know necessarily. So that's why we got the Director Butters to submit letters on, on their behalf.
That's a good move, because minor modifications get me concerned.
Right, understood.
Because people are not, they're not exercising their rights in some cases.
Right. But as I say, these are all Director Butters, they're not far-flung, these are Director Butters.
Um, so nothing else has, has impacted, anything that this board would be concerned about? Either it would be setback, lock coverage, any of those things?
As I said, we're not creating any new nonconformities, and we're not triggering any, going above the lock coverage.
Okay.
And again, we're staying within the 5% tolerance, which allows us to do the minor modification.
So David, I, you're all set with this? All right, well, I'd like to get that plan back, if I may. We're gonna have to make it part of the, um, record. Now, Mary Ann, you might want this to be part of the record.
So we did submit the, the, what was approved and what was proposed. That's just kinda like a, a chalk, so to speak.
Well, you might wanna have something for the record, though.
It should be in there.
It should be, it was submitted.
Oh, okay. So you have, so you have a plan?
That shows the new and what was approved.
Okay.
I just kinda did an overlay, just so you can kinda, as opposed to.
I wanna make sure it's part of the record, that's all, and it's in the folder.
Yeah.
All right.
Instead of having to do like a side-by-side, trying to figure out what's what, I tried to make it easy.
All right, so I'd like to get a motion to accept this, number one, as a minor modification, so. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So I'd like to get a vote.
Did we ask, um?
Public.
You don't need to.
My apologies.
I don't think you really need to.
Anyone in the public like to speak in reference to this application?
There you go.
There you go, thank you for that, save it, David?
I live directly next door, and we vote to, uh, approve.
Well, thank you for that vote. And who are you up here?
They're in support of the project.
Okay, thank you.
It's unanimous.
And David saved me, because I didn't go to the audience. You're supposed to speak up, I said that in the beginning.
I was waiting.
That's right. Thank you very much. All right, so we have, it's a minor modification. Like to get a vote in reference to the alterations, um, that they are approved.
Close public hearing.
Close the public.
Like to close the public hearing. Get a motion, please.
An emotion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Wait, there wasn't a public hearing?
It's not a public hearing.
Well, it's minor, so there wouldn't be a public hearing. So I got you on that one.
There you go.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Close the non-public hearing.
Yeah, we'll just close the non-public hearing. So I'd like to have a motion in reference to the alterations and changes depicted.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Good work.
So you might wanna stick around, Counselor, for one second?
Sure, absolutely.
We're, I guess, at additional topics now?
Yep.
So I just wanna make one statement very quickly in reference to 50 Kim Path. Uh, I was quoted quite extensively in the newspaper this last week.
Mashpee, what does it go, Mashpee?
Enterprise. One thing that was left out of the whole statement, and that was the following. I turned to the engineer and I asked the following question. Are you making the flooding, et cetera, et cetera, better? And he said, yes, we are improving the situation. We, it's a matter of record that they were raising the house, making the house flood zone compliant, the new house, and they were putting an IA system in. That is the reason why I voted to approve the application. That was not said in the paper.
It was, it was misinterpreted.
Very important to make that statement, because the situation is getting, will get better with the new build. Now, and second and last, um, my only reason for saying what I said was, people need to understand that when they, and someone says, when that 100-year storm comes, well, I plan on leaving, I'll go somewhere else. If you don't leave soon enough, you're not leaving, because your car will be underwater. They don't comprehend the height of that water that may be. I almost requested during that application that the engineer put a PK, which is a stake in the telephone pole, so they can look over as the homeowner and say, the water's gonna go that high? Yes, it will. And so when it does, don't think you're gonna drive down Kim Path Road.
So you're responding to a false media reporter?
That is my opinion. Yes, there was more, there was more than.
I responded to a false media reporter.
Now, you know what? My attorneys over the years have said to me, because there've been another situation, just let it go, but you know what? People have also said to me, you know what?
Good to clarify.
It could be used against this board at a town meeting that says, raise and replace, they're doing, see this, they're doing raise and replaces that are just not in our best interest.